I'll call this meeting to order of the Anwasa Board of Directors, special meeting for Thursday, July 30th, 2020. Mr. Hudson will lead us in the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As is your custom, please bow with me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us and we thank you for our ability to come here and conduct business of our community. I ask you to please bless those that are assembled with wisdom and clarity. Father, help us do what's best for all of our citizens and especially in this very important area of the utilities that we need to live and to work. Thank you for all things. Once again, in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Director O'Connor will lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please turn cell phones to off or vibrate. Individuals making presentations or public comments are asked to adjust the microphones as necessary and to speak directly into the microphone. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Hudson, you have a change for the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At the pleasure of the board, I'd ask you to pull item 2F, which is inside the consent agenda, Declaration of Intent to Amend Utility Ordinance. We have some additional language we would like to add to that and we'll bring that back at a future date. That's the only change requested.
Need a motion to move the agenda as amended? Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second item is approval of the items on the consent agenda. You'll hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Members of the board, this evening, we have a special business item, which is item number three, which is a fairly lengthy discussion of capital construction. As we begin this evening, I would like to introduce those present before the board, the consultants other than your staff. Your staff, you know, of course, we have Mr. Chuck Kitchen, our authority attorney. Beside me to the right is Mr. David Moore, our chief operations officer. Two down is Ms. Tiffany Riggs, our chief financial officer. And we also have a number of consultants with us. First, we have Ms. Elaine Conti, who is just to Mr. Moore's right. She is the vice president of Rafftelis. Rafftelis advises us on issues regarding rates and utility rate structures. We also have Mr. Doug Carter, who is to Ms. Tiffany Riggs' right. Mr. Carter is the president, managing director of DEC Associates, which is Defining Emerging Concepts. And to his right is Mr. Andrew Carter, director with DEC Associates. DEC Associates are our financial advisors and they also advise quite a few other utilities in the state, as well as many counties and cities in North Carolina. Behind Mr. and Mr. Carter are the Wooton Company representatives. The Wooton Company, there are some of our consultant engineers and they've spent a tremendous amount of time, months upon months of work on wastewater alternative studies for us. This evening, we have engineer Charles Davis, who is the environmental practice manager for the Wooton Company, engineer Carl Scharf, who is the studies group leader for the Wooton Company, and project engineer Miles Galloway. And I'd like to thank all of our consultants for being here with us this evening. In this room, directors, you have pretty much everyone needed to answer any question you have except for the meaning of life. So as it relates to, as it relates to our special business this evening, we have all of our team members here on deck. This evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we want to talk to you about something that's key and key to our strategic plan. The board adopted a strategic plan with multiple goals and one of the most essential goals for a public utility, for utility authority, is to have reliable and sufficient infrastructure. That's key to us because our public demands that when they turn on the faucet, water actually come out and that it come out every time. So everything that we're talking about this evening deals with water and wastewater and capacity planning. So this evening, we're going to have multiple presentations, kind of really dealing with three different levels. The first level, I call the foundational CIP. Then we have Swansboro wastewater alternatives and then we have Southeast service area wastewater alternatives. The presentations will follow a similar format. First, we'll have engineers led by Mr. Moore talking about why we need to build something, what we need to build and basically when we need to build it. Next, our financial advisors will talk about the investment required. Obviously, we're talking about capital construction contracts that require large sums of money and we have to pay for those. And then, so what's the impact to user rates and fees? Now, after you receive a lot of information about all of that, I will be asking the board for a decision. We'll have a decision point, at which point in time, you'll have a chance to choose the alternative, the way going forward for some of these big issues and topics that we're looking at. This evening, I'd like to just take a moment and highlight the fact that we're asking you to choose direction. We're asking you to choose which capital projects we'll use going forward, or we'll pursue going forward. We're not asking the board, we are not asking the board, to choose a rate increase that will be applied in the future. Why? Because we don't have bids in on all of these. All of these numbers, you're going to hear about how much things cost, they're estimates. Now, they're best estimates based on, you know, what we've been able to discern based on market conditions, what our engineers believe is reasonable, but it can change. Now, I was encouraged today, we actually had a pre-bid meeting for our laboratory building project and we had 15 contractors show up for that pre-bid meeting. And that's actually one of the largest groups of contractors that I've seen lately at a pre-bid meeting. So there's a lot of interest right now, at least in that project, and I hope that that continues on forward. If we continue to get good interest and we have good competition, then we may have bids that come in much lower than these estimates. Conversely, if we have supply shortages and other problems, you know, the bids might be higher. So all these numbers are estimates. The rate increases that would happen in the future are tied to individual budget cycles. And so when we go into our individual budget cycles here at Anwasa over the next five to 10 years, at that time, when we have good numbers and bids in hand, we will know what has to happen. Or in the case of having to set a rate prior to bids in hand, we'll be using the best available data at that point in time to set those potential rate increases. So we are talking about an enormous amount of construction this evening. And as I was going through in my mind, the structure of this type of presentation to the board and to the members of the public that are interested, I came across kind of a question that I would ask. And that is, you know, you're talking about a large amount of money in construction. How healthy is Anwasa? What is your existing financial position? What have you been earning over time? Where have you been historically? And then after that question comes another one. Well, regardless of where you've been historically, we're in the middle of COVID. How has COVID really affected the authority? Because obviously, if we're in a horrible financial position, that means something different for us if we're looking at major construction programs in the future. So as we begin, the real part of the presentation this evening, we're going to begin with answering those questions about how healthy is Anwasa. And Ms. Elaine Conti with Rafftelis will address that, followed by COVID impacts, our CFO, Ms. Tiffany Riggs. Just because we're all spread out, I will hang on to the clicker and I'll ask my fellow presenters just to tap on the table or give me a high sign, throw something at me if you need the next slide, or just say slide, whatever seems to be okay. And as you talk, please feel free to remove your mask. Okay, Elaine?
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. What I first want to do is give a little bit of a history of the rate increases that the authority has had. Over the past 10 years, you'll see the rate increases have been very minimal. If we average out the rate increases over the last 10 years, they've been about 1.25%. To put that in comparison, in North Carolina, the average has been about 4% for water and sewer rates. And that 4% comes from, the UNC Environmental Finance Center does an annual survey that's representative of both public and private utilities, the majority of which are public, and that information comes from there. Another data point is that the state average is a little lower than the national average. The national average annual water rate is about 5% per year and for wastewater, it's about 5.5% per year. So you can see the authority has been well below that historically. The rate increases that you see in 2019 and 2020 were established because at the time, there was a, we actually came before you, we were engaged by the authority to do a rate study, and we looked at the capital improvement plan at that time that was approved. And the rates that you see, 7% and 5.5% are the result of being able to fund that capital plan at that time. And that's similarly to what we're going to be discussing this evening. So that gives you a little bit of a history of the rates. The history of the financial position has been very strong for several reasons. From the revenue side, and you'll hear Ms. Riggs speak in a minute, but historically, had a very strong position. Revenues have steadily increased due to customer base steadily increasing. Also had cost control, and that's really two components, obviously, impact cost control. You have the operations side and you have the debt side. From the operational side, the authority has done very well in budgeting, preparing a five-year plan to look over the five-year period, so you're not just looking annually, so you can anticipate. Also looking at debt and refinancing historically so that you can keep debt services as low as possible. And that's allowed for a very strong position. And when we say strong position, we usually look at two kind of key metrics and measures. And those two are, one is unrestricted fund balance, which is basically your days cash on hand. And what that represents is, if anything were to happen, it's the amount of money that the authority has on hand to be able to pay its operating expenses. So the authority currently has 650 days cash on hand, which basically means that if something were to happen, you could almost fund almost two years' worth of your operating expenses. And that's a very strong position. And debt service coverage, which is really your ability to pay debt, that has also been favorable, I think, most recently, it may have been over two times. And the reason those are important is because as we look to finance a capital plan, which may require some debt issuance, you want to be able to have a strong position so that you can get favorable ratings, which means favorable interest rates. And I'm going to have Ms. Riggs talk about the financial position with COVID.
Good evening. Just wanted to give you a brief update on our financial position during the COVID period, which we are reviewing just March through June of 20 versus the same time period in 2019. And I've just highlighted some of our key revenue lines that kind of give you an indication that we're still growing and we're still making progress in the area with system development fees and TAP fees. Our water and sewer revenue over the last 12 months, which would be fiscal 20 versus fiscal 19, the water revenue has increased 13% and the sewer revenue has increased by 13.1%. And during the COVID time period, water increased 5.3% and sewer increased 6.8%. And you follow along with our system development fees, it follows that same trend that over the fiscal year comparisons, water was up 20.4% and sewer 36.7%. And during the COVID time period, water increased 3.6% and sewer increased 53.5%. Water TAP fees as well increased over the comparison for the fiscal year 19 and 20 by 13.4%. And during the COVID time period, it was 17.6%. And we've also seen growth in our accounts. And currently, our water accounts were at 52,476 and our sewer at 6,735. And of those accounts, we currently have 3,434 accounts that are in a past due status. And our collection rate is a little bit lower than we would like. Hopefully, with the expiration of 142 or EO 142, we'll see that trend back up again. But we're collecting at around 92%. We prefer to be in the 98% range.
Thank you, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Conti. Directors, I would like to mention, if you have any questions at any point in time on any slide, please just stop us. No matter who the presenter is, we're all available to answer questions on the slide that we're currently on. So as we move forward, you know, having looked at the historical perspective of Anwasa, we're now entering those future construction decisions. And the first of those is the foundational CIP. Presenting on this is Anwasa Chief Operations Officer and Professional Engineer, Mr. David Moore. All directors received a copy of the proposed 2020 CIP in your agenda. The CIP itself is not on the screen because it's a fairly large Excel spreadsheet and it just won't show up well in a PowerPoint presentation. But we're available certainly to answer any questions about particular projects. And once again, I'd like to note that all dollar figures are estimates. When we actually open bids, we'll know exactly how much things cost. Now, following Mr. Moore's presentation on what the CIP is and the different projects of the CIP, and highlighting some changes between the 2018 adopted CIP and the proposed 2020 CIP, Ms. Conti will address the investment necessary for just this layer of the cake, if you will. This foundational CIP, this is the first layer, and this CIP does not have in it the Swansboro wastewater alternative or the Southeast wastewater alternative, because those options have not been selected by the board yet. But it does include pretty much everything else. One other note before I turn it over to Mr. Moore, the CIP is something that you really have to revisit annually. So we have changing conditions. We know, for instance, in the last few months, we learned about the addition of 800 or so more marines to Marsoc. And we have differing rate, excuse me, differing growth rates in the county. People don't come uniformly to our county, five to Swansboro, five to Richlands, five to Holly Ridge. So population shifts and where we have a population density or center of gravity, changes where we need to build. So this CIP is something that we continuously revisit. So even though we're looking at this and we tell you it's a five-year CIP, it's a rolling five years that we look at all the time. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. I'm sure to the delight of everybody here tonight, I'm not going to go through individual projects. But I'd like to explain the foundational CIP and then kind of the major changes and what makes it different from 2018. We're calling it the foundational CIP. As we got into looking at the wastewater treatment plant options, we discovered to be very cumbersome to plug each one of those into the CIP, figure out where everything fell out, add up the numbers, then go to the next version. So we basically pulled out all the wastewater alternatives, projects that relate directly to those, and came up with a CIP that is everything else. And that's pretty much what you've been given. It is modification of the 2018 document, tried to keep it the same format. Like I said, it represents everything else we'd be working on. The slide I've got up here on the display covers the main things, the main changes that we've done in the foundational CIP. As I said, number one, it does not include costs associated with Swansboro or Southeast wastewater treatment plants. It also adjusts estimated costs for existing CIP projects from our accurate informations available. Perfect example, Mr. Hudson mentioned the lab building. We had the pre-bid meeting. We have a very, since 2018, obviously, we have a very refined estimate for construction costs. So we've plugged that into the CIP. Again, as he says, it's kind of a live document. As we get costs, we put that in there and we see how it impacts other projects. We've removed projects already completed or completed this fiscal year. Two projects, the local reed meter installation's done, so that comes off the CIP. The Dixon Wells, D-10 and D-11 project will complete in the next month or so, so we're not showing it on the CIP. We've delayed the start of several projects to the second five years, year six through 10, to address changing priorities since 2018 and the potential impact of the wastewater treatment plant projects. In looking at the foundational CIP, we know there are substantial costs with the wastewater treatment. We've kind of reevaluated priorities. We have not eliminated any unstarted projects, but we have pushed some of them back into the second five-year window. An example of that would be several of the sewer system expansion projects. We have started on the first one and we have, I believe, two more that start in the five-year window, but there were three more that'll be pushed back into the six through 10. The last change of significance, we've added a new project to address recurring distribution system issues on Topsail Island. And it is the Topsail Island Booster Pumping Station. I'm not terribly original in how I name projects. We had a firm, not the Wooton Company, but another engineering firm utilize water model. After last July 4th, there was a major pressure drop, primarily due, from what I understand, everybody running inside after a thunderstorm and deciding to take a shower. So we've modeled that, we used that data, plugged it into the model, took a look at ways we could potentially avoid those sudden drops in the system and have come up with an approach to install a booster pumping station actually on the mainland right before you get to the high-rise bridge on 210. Purpose of that would be to boost the pressure at critical times. We feel comfortable with the cost estimate we've gotten from the engineer. They're prepared to start work. I've negotiated a task order for it and if the board approves the project, we'll begin work on it within the month, at least on the design end. We're probably talking a year for design and a year for construction. Next slide. I'm going to turn it back over to Elaine. She's going to talk about the foundational CIP cost per year and then how that works into the rate model. I guess if there are any questions about the foundational CIP?
Before Elaine begins, if there are any questions, you have the CIP spreadsheet. If there are any questions?
Final question. The Topsail Island Booster Station, why not put that on the other side of the bridge and cut down on costs?
The thought on putting it on the mainland was that it would be accessible at all times, even if there was a, I don't want to use the H-word since we're in the season for it, but the fact that it would be accessible on the land side. It's one of the other things that was considered was putting additional storage. And we're worried about the potential for damage or something coming down in a bad storm. So kind of keeping it on the mainland close seemed like a good idea.
Okay, just thought it through.
I actually wrote a note about that as well because the issue was happening on the mainland side. The North Shore Country Club takes up a large amount of that, so I don't know how close in proximity we need to be to the bridge. But our town hall and all of our acreage is right there over the bridge as well, so I don't know if that's something that could be worked in somewhere in that complex.
Possibly. I guess I'd like to see what's available on the land side and if not, then we may be coming to you.
Booster station, would that be like a pressure operated pump, so it only came on when the pressure dropped?
Correct. Yeah. I get into too many technicalities, but I mean, we only have this problem in the middle of summertime and most prevalent on holiday weekends when the usage is high. You don't need a solution in January. So yeah, if it's not, if they don't need it to run, then fine, it doesn't run and we're not paying the electricity bills.
Okay.
Thank you.
This next slide shows the capital improvement plan. It shows the capital projects per year. You'll notice that over the five-year period, the total of the projects Mr. Moore described totals 42 million. Of that, about 28 million are for water projects and the remainder are for wastewater projects. One thing you'll notice is a significant portion of the capital improvement plan is anticipated to take place over 2021 and 2022. And that's important because as we need money for these projects and we have to issue some debt, we'll, you know, the rate increases will need to reflect, in other words, we'll need to be able to generate revenue to pay that debt sooner rather than later. Go to the next slide. Go to the next slide. So what we did, it's very similar to what we did a couple of years ago. We, using a rate model, we layer in the capital improvement plan along with other assumptions so that we can then see what type of rate adjustments we need in order to support the foundational CIP as well as meeting the other key metrics that we talked about earlier. So some of the key assumptions that are similar for, throughout this presentation and the rates that you'll see in a minute are as follows. For growth, we did assume moderate growth over the five-year period. Using, looking at historic data and seeing, you know, the growth in the area, we anticipated moderate growth. So that's one key assumption. We have rolled in the operating cost associated with the capital improvement plan as well as the wastewater alternatives that we'll talk about in a minute. So those have all been layered in as well. The capital projects, about, of the $42 million, about $23 million is anticipated to be funded with debt. So we'll be issuing debt. The remainder will come out of cash. And so basically, as you, we talked about before, the authority has strong days' cash on hand. And we do plan to draw that down, but to a level that still keeps a strong financial position. So we're going to be increasing historically. I think we had estimated about $10 million to come out of reserves to pay for these capital projects. That's going to increase to about $18 million. So we're going to slowly draw down that fund balance. And then we will continue to maintain those metrics. So we're targeting 250 days' cash on hand. So again, we're going to go from about $650 to a little bit above that 250 days' cash on hand. And then we're also going to make sure that we have strong debt coverage, which means we could pay back our debt. When we look at the rate adjustments that we're going to show in a minute, those do apply to both water and wastewater across the board to make the rates, to keep the rates affordable for customers. And then finally, we have attempted to smooth rates. And what we mean by that is we try to make the rates increases as uniform as possible over the period so that customers aren't impacted greatly one year versus another. But we do have to keep in mind how we issue debt. Go to the next slide. So to fund the foundational CIP, what this chart shows is these are the level of rate increases that we've estimated based on the project cost that we know of today. We anticipate needing rate adjustments of 5.5% in 2022, '23, and '24. The reason they're not spread out over the entire period is because, as you may remember, the capital improvement plan is a little more front-loaded. And so if we're going to issue debt earlier, we have to have the revenue to be able to pay the debt. So that's why the rate increases take place sooner rather than across the entire five-year period. So the next couple of charts show the customer impact. So what does it mean to the customer? If we have these level of rate increases, what you'll see is the current water bill is $29.77. And you'll see the annual increases in the red portion. So you could see each year what would be added from that 5.5% increase to get you to about, you know, a little under $35 at the end of this five-year period on the water side. And then the next slide shows you the combined bill. Again, these are monthly bills. This bill is the combined water and sewer bill for the average customer using 5,000 gallons. And again, this kind of shows you the incremental increase per year over that five-year period to be able to fund the foundational CIP.
So members of the board, that covers the CIP and the impact customers. Let me pause and ask if the board members have any questions of Mr. Moore. Once again, for the items on the list to be built, or Ms. Conti, in terms of the way the rate analysis was done? Any methodology questions or any questions about impact to customers?
Board, any questions?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if the board has no questions, staff would request that the board consider a motion on the 2020 foundational CIP. And if the board is satisfied with the 2020 foundational CIP, there are two subsequent motions, which are project budget ordinances for the Topsail Island Booster Pumping Station, and then the aquifer study monitoring wells, which is a monitoring well project to keep track of our aquifers, if the board is satisfied with the foundational CIP.
You want these taken separately then?
Yes, sir.
First motion is, I need a motion to approve the 2020 foundational CIP.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Moving to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Second motion is to approve the project budget ordinance for the Topsail Island Booster Pumping Station.
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the project budget ordinance for the ORWRG aquifer study monitoring wells. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motioned?
Aye.
Moving to second, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. With the foundational CIP decided, now comes really a lot of alternatives before the board. The foundational CIP items, they're, from an engineering standpoint, I say they're fairly straightforward. If you have a pipe that's too small, you need a bigger pipe. But when you come to wastewater alternatives, there may be multiple ways to solve a wastewater capacity issue. And so next come presentations on Swansboro and Southeast Sewer, excuse me, Southeast Service Area Wastewater Alternatives. Once again, the board commissioned major studies, and those studies were brought back to the board. And when those studies were brought back, you had six alternatives before you for Swansboro and six alternatives before you for Southeast. And when I say Southeast, I mean the Holly Ridge and Summer House combined plants. That they kind of support each other. With those massive studies conducted by the Wooten Company, the board took a look at those six alternatives and narrowed them last year to three. So now there are three alternatives for Swansboro and three alternatives that the board asked Wooten to study for Southeast. Why did we narrow? Well, because it would have been even more expensive and taken a lot longer to study 12 different alternatives in great detail and depth as opposed to three and three, a total of six alternatives in great detail. Our consultant engineers focused on those top three options for both of those service areas. And they brought those back to us. And now we have a lot of detail, much more information on project cost estimates than we did before. And we're ready to present the board with three alternatives in greater detail for Swansboro and three alternatives that Wooten has studied in great detail for Southeast and a fourth alternative that Wooten has begun to study for the Southeast area. Mr. Moore, our COO, will take the lead with representatives of Wooten here to help answer any questions about the studies that they conducted if necessary. And once again, Mr. Moore, I'd like to start with, of course, Swansboro and the question, why are we even studying this?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. The why are we here? The graph that's on the display right now is a very, kind of bare bones way to explain it. Walked through it briefly. It came out of the original studies. The Wooten Company looked at the condition of the existing plants plus the existing flow to them and projected out over 20 years. You recall the flow from both the area around the plant that serves now plus a potential growth area. They used census tracts and did quite a thorough analysis, I think, of what we would like to see in the future regarding sewer flow, in this case, Swansboro. The chart's relatively simple. The curve lines, the lower curve line, blue line, is the anticipated growth over time for the existing service area of Swansboro. As things fill in, people tie on on the perimeter. The red line would be an accelerated or growth curve in that area that's outside of Swansboro would develop and tie into the system. The reason we're here is the first horizontal line. That dark line is the current capacity of the Swansboro wastewater plant at 600,000 gallons a day. As you can see, the point where either one of those two curve lines crosses the flat line is where we run out of room and we're incapable of taking sewer anymore. In the case of Swansboro, it's been projected in a growth model by 2024 and with the existing service area model by 2027. So at the point that we reach the capacity, two things will happen. One, we will not be able to take any more sewer. And two, the state will come down, it's like a ton of bricks, about what are you doing about the capacity of your plant? One of the reasons the studies were initiated is we were coming close to 80% of capacity. And the state mandates you start to study what you're going to do. Actually, at 90%, they mandate you have a plan and you start moving toward constructing it. So I guess, without going through too much of the original studies, the reason we're here is we're running out of capacity. Next slide.
Hard to see, but that looks like next year we get to 80%. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're fairly close right now. The board had recommended three alternatives at Swansboro. They all kind of came around to common theme. And I guess I'll just go through them briefly to refresh everybody's memory. Alternative one involved, in simplest terms, constructing a force made and pump stations to send 100% of the flow that currently goes to the plant to the Piney Green Pump Station at Camp Lejeune and have the Marines treat the waste. In effect, basically taking the existing Swansboro plant out of service. The goal of the technical study that Wooten did between December and this point was to kind of go back through the numbers they did in the original study, make sure that they had a good capital cost, that their operating costs, O&amp;M cost, I should say, were on target, and then develop a project schedule. And all those are on this display and have been given to you in your packet. I would offer that for Swansboro alternative number one, the change from the original study, the construction cost actually came down slightly as they took a closer look at it. There was almost no change in the O&amp;M, and the project schedule was roughly seven months shorter than they originally thought. It's, I believe, the shortest timeframe of any of the three alternatives. A question that came up in discussing this involves the French Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is aboard Camp Lejeune. Can they take our waste and process it? The permitted capacity of French Creek is 15 million gallons a day. I've talked to them within the last week. Their current average daily flow is at 4 million gallons a day. So their available capacity is a lot compared to what we would have to give them. And they've told me in the past in casual conversation, they would appreciate more domestic waste to help their plant run better. The intergovernmental service agreement, and that's a big word, has a maximum allowable flow. The current agreement, we've executed a 5 million gallons a day. That's split between us and the city of Jacksonville, four for us and one for Jacksonville. The current flow going through the Piney Green Pump Stations, only .3 million gallons a day. So under an agreement that's already in place, we have an available capacity of 4.7 million gallons a day. And the amount we would need for Swansboro under the growth model is roughly 1.5. Go ahead and give me the next one. As I said, the three alternatives for Swansboro kind of revolved around the same theme. They all involve making connection to the French Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. Alternative two would be to keep the existing plant as it stands today at the 600,000 gallon a day capacity and then build a force made and pump station to send flow to the French Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. It also includes some plant upgrades. There are portions of Swansboro plant that are dated and need to be improved. Obviously, a higher cost in the capital side. The changes from the original study, there's roughly a $6 million increase in construction. In looking at it in more detail, it was determined the additional pump station and force made was required. If we were going to send flow to the base, we wouldn't send it all to the wastewater plant and then back to the base. So we'd want to intercept flow closer to Jacksonville and send it that direction. So it's a little bit different configuration. The O&amp;M cost went up about 10% with the new pump station. The construction period is a little bit shorter than originally thought. The final alternative, alternative three, was to actually do a force made and pump stations to the French Creek plant. But it was dovetailed with expanding the Swansboro plant to what the consultant has determined is the maximum capacity, which is 1.2 million gallons a day. So we would build out the Swansboro plant to as much as the plant and the infiltration basins would hold. And the rest of it would go to Camp Lejeune, which would be roughly 300,000 gallons a day at full build-out. The biggest change from the original study, we were going to modify the wastewater plant first, but it thought it'd be more prudent to put the force made in and start sending flow to the base and then come back and do the plant as necessary. As you can see, the costs are very substantial. It's the most expensive one, very substantial, because of course, we're expanding the wastewater plant and the infiltration basin site up on Parkertown Road. The change from the original study, the Phase One, which is the force made, went up by about $10 million with the additional pump station and some of the other things we had to do. The Phase Two, the plant work, was down slightly from the original cost estimate, but not a lot. There's about a 5% to 10% increase in the O&amp;M from the original study, and the timeframe's about the same. Kind of to summarize the capital cost, have the three of them here to compare. Clearly, the alternate one, all flow to the base is the lowest capital cost. I would reinforce the note here that Phase, the alternate three is $61 million, but that's in two phases, and it's stretched out over time. Obviously, if the flow, if the anticipated flow to Swansboro isn't what we think it's going to be, then that second phase would be reevaluated later on. But I'm going to hand back off to Elaine, and she can talk about the financial end of the alternatives and how they impact rates.
Thank you.
Explain to me, the land acquisition easement's cost varies from $0 to $300,000. And most of that property would be used for the whole force made by Marine Corps property, right?
Either Marine Corps or right-of-way. It mostly comes into where, it mostly comes into where we have to put the pump stations. Like if we do an intermediate pump station, we'd have to buy property to place that because it wouldn't be anywhere near an Anawasa facility. I will say, in alternate one, our first major pump station, and Wooten can correct me if I'm wrong, is going to be on the grounds of the Hubert Water Plant because it's right there and it's ours. So there's no property acquisition at all for that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. So what we did, we took each of these alternatives and then we layered them in on top of the foundational CIP. So what this shows you are the anticipated incremental rate increases from each of these wastewater alternatives. The top line shows you the foundational CIP rate increases. So that, you know, we discussed those. And then layering in each alternative independently, what you see in the middle of this chart is the incremental annual rate increase that you would need for that alternative. So you add that to the foundational CIP. And the bottom of that chart shows you the total increase that you'd need for that alternative. So for example, for the first alternative, it's about 6% each year in 2022 to 2025. You know, to point out, because alternative three is going to be done in two phases and the second phase is beyond this five-year forecast, what we estimated was it would require an additional 6.5% increase to what you see here. So in other words, when you look at alternative So in other words, when you look at alternative three and the total increase is 24%, that's only for this first five-year period. You'd have to add an additional 6.5% to that. So you'd be at about 30.5% rate increase for alternative number three. And then the corresponding customer impacts are on the next chart. The top part is the average monthly water bill that you could anticipate for each of the alternatives. And then the second part is the combined water and sewer bill. So again, you can kind of see, if you kind of focus on 2026, you can see where you end up for each of the, under each of those alternatives.
Members of the board, that's kind of the three alternatives that's been worked out through the Wooten Company. We once again appreciate their hard work and Mr. Moore's office on what our alternatives are and Ms. Conti, the impact to customers. Let us pause now, Mr. Chairman, and answer any questions the board might have about Swansboro.
Questions from the board? Yes, Pat?
I have two questions, just to clarify, and I think I already know the answers to this, but what happens to the property in Swansboro if we go to the base? We take everything to the base? And second question is, the lease that you have on the base, if they decided to stop doing this, what are our options?
The second one is an easier one for me. The agreement, the intergovernmental service agreement with the base gives a three-year window in the event they're unable to accept it. They basically give us three years heads up and that would mean at that point, we'd immediately start on building some type of treatment facility to take over from them.
Is that enough time, I mean, to build something if you had to construct something? And that's worst-case scenario?
Yes. Well, and I don't, no?
No.
Go ahead.
I wouldn't think so.
The way that contract is written, it lays out the way it is supposed to work. However, if you look at what your options are, if the United States were to breach the contract, you have no remedies, which is to say, they lay out this three years and I fully expect that you would have at least three years. It becomes a political issue is really what it becomes. And we'd get our congressman involved and so forth if something were to happen. But just be aware that worst-case scenario is the United States says, we're cutting you off tomorrow and that's just too bad. And you would really have no, you have no options. You have no legal means of enforcing the contract.
But that would also be...
I don't think that would happen, but just understand that is the worst case.
That would also mean that the base would tell every Marine, dependent, child, community member that they have to stop flushing tomorrow.
That's right. And I just don't think that'll happen. I just don't think it's, it's really a viable thing for them to do, but understand that is the way it's written.
Has it happened to be written that way?
According to them, yes. We spent, how long?
We spent months working on that agreement.
And we changed all that language and it got changed back, basically at the end.
I believe the practical realities of them cutting us off, it would be, it would be, I can't imagine a scenario in which they would say, you have to stop flushing tomorrow. I believe the worst-case scenario would be that they would, they would give us a three-year window to go to another alternative, which kind of brings up your first question, what will we do with the land? I believe it's essential that Anwasa retain all the property so that if we had to go in a different direction, we would at least have the property. One of the most difficult things in my experience in doing any construction project, whether it's a library or an airport strip or, you know, runaway or anything, is property acquisition, getting that. We have sufficient property at Hubert for infiltration basins that we're utilizing now and we do have the plant site, which is where the collection system ends up inside Swansboro. So staff's professional recommendation to the board would be that we not, we not release any of the property for any other purpose.
Who owns the properties? Swansboro or the Anwasa?
Gretch.
Swansboro owns the pumps, the wastewater treatment plant. And if Anwasa were to quit using it and decommission it and take, and basically take all the, fill in all the lagoons where it's done, then it would revert back to Swansboro.
That's what I thought.
That's the way all of them are written.
But we're not proposing to decommission it. We're just proposing to mothball it, perhaps.
We'll continue using the property as pump stations and for other purposes, but we definitely want to retain the property for the future. Mr. Moore, you also had something to add.
Yeah, no, that was what I was going to say, that even if we choose alternate one, there will still be operating facilities at that site. There will be a pump station there. I mean, all the waste comes to that point already. It doesn't make any sense to send it all somewhere else. We'll get it there and send it back out where it needs to go. So there will be active facilities on that site, even in alternate one.
Okay. Thank you.
How much property does the prison plant occupy, you know?
I don't even think I have anything. Any idea? I don't remember.
Probably considerably larger than what just a pump station would take up.
Yeah, there's an upset pond on the site that's a pretty good size.
I would like to make a motion to approve the alternative one, where we send it all to Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune.
To approve alternative number one, do I have a second? Second discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve alternative number one signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As we move from Swansboro into the discussion of the southeast service area, I would reiterate that we now have four alternatives. When we left the board last, we had three. However, we do have four and what we would like to do is cover all four of them with you and then come back and spend a little bit of additional time, a more in-depth discussion of alternative three, which is a public-private partnership. And Mr. Doug Carter and Mr. Andrew Carter will be handling that portion of the conversation. To begin with though, we'll start with Mr. Moore, who will present alternatives number one through four, and he'll begin with that first question again, why do we have to do anything? Mr. Moore?
And again, we're similar to Swansboro. We've done the long-term analysis and planning, the demand in the area, again, using census tracts to determine where's possible future service areas. Similar type of chart, the red line, the red curved line is the growth model, then the more straight blue line is the just existing, expansion of the existing service area. I would note that, as you can see, the lower horizontal line is the current combined capacity, which is 356,000 gallons a day. Our projections show that we're going to cross that before 2023, so within the next three years. A lot of that depends on further development around Holly Ridge, but also how fast Summerhouse builds out. We are, in addition to doing this study, we've petitioned the state to increase our discharge capacity at Summerhouse. That's pending, just had some discussion with them within the last week to buy us a little more additional time while we make decisions. Again, in southeast, the combined Holly Ridge and Summerhouse, there were three alternatives that were studied. Alternative number one was to expand the Summerhouse wastewater treatment plant and construct a new treatment plant at the Holly Ridge site. That also involves additional infiltration basins, creating infiltration basins that are spray field and excavating the number one pond at Summerhouse. The changes from the original study, the construction cost was slightly less, less than a million dollars less on the, when they examined it a second time. The O&amp;M costs went up based on the schedule for how the projects played out, as you would be doing one and then the other. The second treatment train at Holly Ridge causes additional O&amp;M cost. The project schedule was roughly the same. The Summerhouse plant has a maximum capacity of 400,000 gallons a day and we're using, I think we're capable of processing 200. Our waste disposal system is around 125,000 gallons a day. Southeast alternative two is constructing a new wastewater treatment plant to replace both Summerhouse and Holly Ridge. We would use the existing spray irrigation site near Summerhouse and convert it to infiltration basins for disposal. The two existing plants would no longer be necessary. Changes from the original study, the construction cost is slightly less than originally calculated. O&amp;M cost about the same. The project schedule, the total project schedule is 54 months, is slightly longer. There's more infiltration basins to construct than originally estimated. The last one. Southeast alternative number three, that was constructing a pump station and force main at the Summerhouse site to connect to a new Pluris wastewater treatment plant and eliminating the two existing plants. I need to advise the board, the figures on here only include Anwasa's part in terms of the capital cost, the O&amp;M, and the construction time, which would be a pump station and roughly one mile of force main. We anticipate Pluris would build within about a mile of the Summerhouse site, based on discussions we've had. Remaining costs and negotiation, how things would work with Pluris, not really part of the technical end and I'll have to defer to DEC for that. Changes from the original study, the construction cost was about the same and there really was no change in the O&amp;M or the project schedule. It's a very straightforward project, similar to things we do quite a bit, pump station and force main. As Mr. Hudson said, an alternative four has made an appearance here recently. We've worked with Wooten a little bit to flesh it out, but it has not had the same kind of detailed examination. But to give you a recap, the Stone Bay on the Sneets Ferry side of the Marine Corps Base sends its wastewater to French Creek through a system of pump stations and force mains. There's actually three pump stations that are potential connection points for Anwasa. Similar to what we proposed for Swansboro, connecting at Piney Green, we would connect to one of those pump stations, pump all the waste that's currently treated at both Summerhouse and Holly Ridge there, and then it would carry on through their system to their treatment plant. Mentioned before, the intergovernmental service agreement. The 20-year projection for southeast is a million gallons a day. So even adding that on top of Swansboro and what we're sending them now, we're still within the existing agreement. As I said, alternative four would consist of pumping stations of both treatment plants and all the flow then would go on to the base. I've got the next slide. Apologize if all these maps not very good. Just to give you an idea, the, at the bottom of the page, the two wastewater plants, Holly Ridge and Summerhouse, the most likely location for the connection is where, I guess it's a purple line goes up, they call it their SR61 pump station. It's right off of Highway 17. That straight line just gives you an idea, it's roughly 8.4 miles from the Holly Ridge wastewater treatment plant, as the crow flies. We haven't done a great deal of investigation on a route for it, but following Highway 17 or approximately, it's roughly a 10-mile force main. So very similar to Swansboro alternative one. Yes, sir?
The line would be reversed going back to Holly Ridge.
Yes. Yeah, actually, we talked about that with the engineer. We would put a pump station in and instead of sending it from Janka Street to Summerhouse, we'd send it from Summerhouse to Janka Street or directly to the, yeah. So reutilize that asset that's in the ground already. We asked Wooten to go through, given what little we know and what their experience has been with the rest of the study, to give us a cost for this alternative and this is just a capital cost. And as I said, it's very preliminary, but the total estimated capital cost is, as you see there, 18.1 million dollars. It actually comes in relatively close to the alternate three involving Pluris. It's a little bit more than Swansboro number one, but there's a lot of unknowns in this one still. So trying to be very conservative in the estimate. We do not have any kind of estimate of an O&amp;M at this time. With that, alternative?
One note on alternative four, while we're here, members of the board, I sent you an email today. We received a preliminary email from the Marine Corps Base and so the costs that you see on the screen are to get our wastewater to the connection point with the military system. One question that we asked them is what types of increases or upsizing would you need in your system to accept our waste? And although some additional engineering needs to be done, the preliminary answer from the Marine Corps Base Public Utilities Department at least, is that it does not appear that with our current wastewater flow rates, our current levels, that they would require any upsizing on their end. As we move more toward our future projections, however, of a million gallons per day, that there probably would be some upsizing of pumps or something like that down the line. But once again, that's based on future growth. But initially, based on our existing flows, the preliminary estimates are that they would not need any upsizing. Mr. Moore, anything else on that?
No, thank you for covering that.
Do you have a timeframe on that, on alternative four? Is it any kind of guess of how long, how long it would take to start that?
I would actually ask if the Wooten team, who spent a little bit of time looking at that, are also looking at the Swansboro number one alternative, would answer that question? We have an empty seat here. Carl, if you wouldn't mind just taking that question from the director? Mr. Carl Scharf?
Thank you, Pat. Opportunity to speak. Yes, we, as going forward here, we'll look at that even more closely. Okay, so we're at that point that we'll take a closer look at that, but based upon the Swansboro, the Swansboro and the this alternative four are pretty close in terms of what is required to do in terms of design and in terms of construction. The alternative four for the southeast is a little longer force main than Swansboro. I'd expect it to take a little bit longer than what we had projected for Swansboro. So we're probably talking in the range of, you know, a year for design and then probably 15 months for construction, in that range, 12 to 15 months for construction. So quite similar to Swansboro, but maybe a little bit longer because the line's longer. Does that answer the question? Okay, thanks.
Scharf?
Have someone clarify the cost of the treatment facility for new treatment plant Pluris? Does that cost standalone, something that Pluris would absorb or something would be expected to pay? Or is it something that would be reflected in the rates they would charge us for treatment?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for that segue.
Perfect segue.
That's a perfect segue.
Been planned it that way, didn't we?
Mr. Doug Carter and Mr. Andrew Carter, we're authorized by the board at our last meeting to begin some preliminary negotiations and conversations with Pluris and all And alternative three, uh, with Pluris, um, was, well, alternative three was presented from merely a, a, a technical engineering standpoint from Onwassa's perspective, which is a pump station and a mile of line by Mr. Moore. But, but that's only the technical engineering aspect of it. The very next slide, Mr. Chairman, uh, is, is the slide in which Mr. Carter, uh, Mr. Doug Carter and Mr. Andrew Carter would like to talk to the board, really exploring that negotiation and all the other aspects of any possible, uh, relationship with Pluris, including the question you just asked, which is Pluris capital and how that might be affecting Onwassa. Mr. Carter?
Sure, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we're happy to be here. In the last meeting, Andrew represented us. I forgot what happened to me, but anyway, glad to be here. Um, as we all know, this alternative is what we all fondly refer to as a P3, a public-private partnership. And this partnership is unique in that because we would be dealing with Pluris as a partner to construct and operate a one MGD plant, we would not involve the North Carolina Utilities Commission, they wouldn't be engaged in any ratemaking, it would essentially be how you operate all your plants and how you do ratemaking. And so as a way to gather data about that, uh, and at the request of you all as well as your management staff, we began what I would call rather in-depth conversation with principals at Pluris on how would we get this done? What would be the process? What would be the cost? What would be their challenges? Things of that nature. And so what I've tried to do in two slides is just categorize it into several categories. One, what are the business points? What are our information unknowns? What are our risks and rewards? And if we move forward, what is the process and timing to get it done? So I'll do those rather quickly, but I'm, I'm here to answer whatever questions you have. Um, under this a- agreement at the current understanding with Pluris, this discussion, they would want to build and operate this plant, and we would do that by a construction agreement and an operating agreement. Our initial discussions with Pluris had only an operating agreement, and in that operating agreement, they would have passed both the capital cost and the operating cost to Onwassa. We said to them, your capital costs are fixed and your operating costs are variable. We want to pay you a fixed cost for your capital and a, a variable cost for your operating. So we would reimburse you for capital cost as is, and then we would pay you operations. And so that's why it sort of moved between a construction and an operating agreement. So their current estimate, and as I said here, their term sheet is preliminary at this point, it is not an offer, it is current level of negotiations. They would build the plant for approximately 13.1 million. That would add to the approximate three to five million of hours, five million of hours. Um, at the end of 20 years, they would finance that plant, and at the end of 20 years, it would be conveyed to Onwassa. There were initial discussions about the basis for that conveyance, uh, we ultimately came to it would be conveyed for free. You would not have to buy a plant out that you'd already paid all the debt service on. Um, there would be annual escalators for the operating costs, there are cost increases due to inflation and other costs. Uh, that would be benchmarked. There were fairly extensive discussions on what benchmark would be used. At this point, it was just too preliminary to figure out what was the appropriate operating cost escalator benchmarks. And then there were a number of other points that I won't take up your time on now that we discussed in terms of operat- ownership and operations. Now, what are the information unknowns we have at this point? Because this is a preliminary and doesn't represent, you know, a, a final offer. Uh, the location of the plant has not been fully determined. Um, and so, uh, cost of the land, uh, is not fully in the 13.1. Discussion of affluent disposal methods and cost would still be undertaken and would obviously be based on where the plant was, did Pluris have ability to handle some of that in other locations? So those sort of technical, uh, considerations and costs are still, um, uh, under discussion based upon, uh, if we move forward with this alternative, then we would get heavily into those kinds of issues. Um, the other information unknown, we attempted and are still doing this and had some good feedback to speak with them about the financial condition of the private company we would be dealing with. I think all of us know that if you deal with a private party that's going to construct and operate something for you, you want to make sure they're a going concern, what are their financial conditions and circumstances? We've had preliminary circumst- discussions around those, that's still ongoing. Um, I just wanted to lay out you, for you from our perspective, some, from discussions internally, wha- what would be the risks and rewards? From a private party perspective, they are likely going to build it cheaper because they do not use the same procurement methods that we use in the public setting. And so I, I firmly believe that there is a great potential for a lower construction cost potential. Uh, I think there's a likelihood they could build it more rapidly potentially than we. So lower cost, probably quicker. Um, however, uh, they were going to build the plant with their own financing sources, with their own borrowings and equity contributors to that plant. And so because you are a highly rated public entity that can issue tax-exempt debt in today's market, yeah, read my lips, less than two and a half percent for 30 years. They simply cannot match your cost of funds as private companies. And so they could likely build it cheaper, likely build it quicker, borrow more for it, higher interest rate. Um, the operating cost they have preser- they presented and was not on, uh, David's sheet, Mr. Moore's sheet, is their annual operating cost would, for the one MGD plant would be slightly over a million dollars in the first fully operational year, and then would be subject, as I said to you earlier, some agreed-upon cost escalator. CPI or some other escalator more akin to an operation of a water and sewer operation. Um, right now, if you look at the way the cost factor into rate setting, if you look at slightly lower construction cost, they're slightly higher, uh, financing cost, a higher operating cost than the other three alternatives, basically, as you will see in a minute, at the current time, as the negotiations have currently done, there is not a significant cost difference between this alternative and the public alternatives. There also are, and I'm not playing lawyer here, Mr. Attorney, but in our business, financial people talk about legal stuff a lot. When you deal in a pu- a P3 environment, you always have to look into the future about impacts of financial stress, God forbid bankruptcy, other issues of a private party that you have operating and construction agreements with. So all of that would have to be negotiated and factored into this. So if we decided that this alternative, this one that we should pursue, and let me just say this is a sideline, and Mr. Hudson, if I'm going too fast, you throw something at me. Really good negotiations, really good talks, very open, um, conversations with principals at Pluris, uh, with their CFO as well as the operating principals. So I give them great credit for that, there was no holdback. There's simply factors that they don't fully know, just like we're making estimates, estimates for our cost, they're making estimates for their cost. And I think until they really feel that they're a valid alternative, they're just not going to show us a whole lot of their financials. So what would happen if we wanted to engage in negotiations with them for this alternative? We believe it would probably take until September to organize a team. The team would consist of an attorney, one or more, would consist of financial people, would consist of your management people, and that team would then, with your approval, begin negotiations. My belief is, we've done a number of P3 of multiple kinds in, in our firm's history. Um, they take months because you negotiate and then you renegotiate and so forth and so on. Uh, so we're thinking that's probably a six-months process. We must obtain local government commission approval to do this, we all know the local government commission, that is a three-month process, they would be heavily engaged in this. Um, and then I did insert that there could be an additional two months because the local government commission has become more and more, uh, of the view that an independent third-party feasibility study might need to be undertaken completely separate and apart to look at this after everything was negotiated. And then it would take a month or so for approval. So from start to finish, a year-ish ballpark? And then, unless we want to discuss that one specifically, we looked at another private alternative that said, what if we sold our assets? Simply sold them to a private party? Do we want to go into that now? Mr. Hudson? Okay. Now, we, we spent expensive time with, uh, your attorney, a bond attorney, and others to look at how does that process work? Because the sale of a public wastewater, or for that matter, water, a, a publicly-owned water or wastewater asset is exceedingly rare in this state. So there's just not a lot of benchmarks, that you don't see six cases and how they operated. And so in some respects, you would be creating your own benchmark. Um, under North Carolina law, if you sell a public asset to a private company, the North Carolina Utility Commission is the controlling entity on virtually everything because ultimately the rates set for those wastewater customers, now private wastewater customers, if you sold it, are all under the control of the North Carolina Utilities Commission. And as we all know, they want rates to be as low as they possibly can be. Um, so you, we completely changed the process. Um, really quickly, the way they look at this, they, the Utilities Commission, the way they look at what is your public asset worth, is they look at it sort of in three rates, like basically how do you get to a new base private rate under a private asset now owned by a private company? You first get there by determining the cost of the system's assets they acquired, our asset that they bought. Two, they look for reasonable rates of return for the company, and then three, they look at reasonable operating cost. What factors also into this is what is the value or cost of your system compared to how many customers you have? And so when you look at the value of your system, obviously not just what you paid for it, what you have debt outstanding for it, what is the depreciated cost for it, they also look at the number of customers that would be paying that cost if it became a private system. There are now two statutory methods to value your assets. And I've described them a little bit, there's one that's called original ca- cost or fair value. The fair value is a new method that was authorized by the legislature in 2018. And so basically, neither one of those methods makes it really easy to determine what they say they're going to allow the private party to give you for the purchase of your asset. And so to the extent that we looked at this method and wanted not to have a private party assist it with us, but wanted a private party to buy it and maintains its customers as private customers, then we would spend considerable amount of time looking at what we feel is the value of our asset and what they feel the value of our asset is. And basically, in the final word, their determination would rule. And I, I made a point, I hope it would never happen, but it's conceivably possible that they could determine that the value of your asset was less than the debt you owe on it. Who knows? We just don't know any of those things right now. It would be a process. Um, it would take considerable time to do this because under the 2018 change, the fair value, that hasn't been done yet to the best of my knowledge. And so we would essentially be sitting new ground to look at what is the best method, the original cost or the fair value? What does all of that mean? How do we negotiate all of this? Who are the parties we bring to the table to try to get our position, which is as much as we can get for the value of our asset? Um, and ultimately, when it's all said and done, as I said to you in the first set of sub-bullet points, all of that filters its way down so that the Utility Commission looks at what do these three factors produce in rates to these private wastewater customers? That's the outcome of all of it. So the last method, selling your assets, some or all of your assets, is probably by far at the current time the most complicated, simply because there's just not a lot of benchmarking. We can't say, hey, we like that one, let's go after that as a way to do it, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Members of the board, I'd like to stop for a second. Uh, we've talked a lot, there are a lot, there's a lot going on with public-private partnerships. If any members of the board have questions of Mr. Doug Carter or Mr. Andrew Carter about public-private partnerships, this would be a great time.
I guess my, my question is about the, uh, about, about the agreement. Is, is it, I mean, if you, if we're paying the cost of construction, is it, is it just, is it based on actual invoice cost? What we end up paying would be the cost of the construction?
That would certainly be because there would be a construction agreement separate and apart from the operating agreement. I know, Mr. Kitchen, I'm playing a little bit of lawyer here, but yes, under the construction agreement, we would certainly want to pay actual cost. And there would need to be a discussion if that actual cost had any development cost charged to us by the private party, or whether it was purely their invoice cost. It is customary that they would receive a form of a development cost. So all of, and I'm not saying it would be, I have asked them, um, uh, under the Pluris option, the one we're talking about, to give us a breakdown of the 13.1 million to determine if there is, if that is in there, but I'm yet to receive that.
So Pluris's profit is in the operating costs?
No.
I'm sorry. If I could follow up.
Surely.
I, I have talked to Pluris, not about what this, about this deal, but more about another deal. I can, I can't guarantee you there's a development fee in there, but I feel in my bones there is a development fee and they're getting money out of the construction. I, I just, I just, everything I've talked to them about it, they're getting money out of the construction.
And to be honest with you, sitting in this room and being honest and fair, there could be the potential that that is a fair fee at the right level because somebody is expending time and effort.
That's right.
The issue is, is it the right number?
That's right. Wouldn't want to deny them making any money.
Exactly.
The only way that we, the only way that we come out on the good end is, is by them being able to do it cheaper than what we can do it.
That is correct.
Pretty much. Right? Yes.
And in our early negotiations, when we first started talking, I just let them know that y'all were very open to this as an alternative and exceedingly interested in it. But from the basis of a business strategy, we wanted to be an equal partner, and we wanted to negoti- negotiate fair costs, not only on the debt cost slash capital cost, but also on the annual operating cost. And so all of those details would have to be worked through at the, at the appropriate time. But we, we, we are firmly focused on paying what is right and not any more.
Pluris right now has sewer customers, right?
Yes.
How does their rate compare with ours?
Well, we, we have a, a customer in the, in the room.
Sewer in North Topple Beach, they are the sewer provider, and I pay a plat- a plat fee of, uh, $58 a month.
$58?
Yes, sir.
They are often a bit higher than the public cost.
Somehow I have the feeling in my mind that Onwassa was created not only to provide sewer service for areas that didn't have it before and good water quality service. We do that in consideration that we're elected officials and stand for the people that we serve, customers. And I'd hate to see us give up that responsibility, even if some would argue that, well, the Public Utility Commission will defend people against arbitrary and capricious rates. But I have more faith in Onwassa's Board of Directors than I do of the public. But I have more faith in Onwasa's board of directors than I do the Public Utilities Commission.
Mr. Chairman, that's our presentation on public-private partnerships, and we've heard a little bit about the four engineering alternatives that are available. We asked Raff Tellus to take a look at, at the impact to our customers. And so I'd ask Ms. Conti to take a look at our capital costs, if the board is ready to take a look at impact and total costs. And we certainly will have time for further questions about Southeast, which will probably come up as well. But stop us at any time that anyone has a question.
Okay, thank you. This slide just summarizes the capital cost for each of the alternatives. And to note, since Southeast Alternative Four is new, subsequent to this presentation, that capital cost is 18.1 million. You will not see it in the subsequent slides, but again, just to kind of bump it up against all the other capital costs. And then the next slide is similar to what we saw earlier where we once again take the foundational CIP and then we layer in all of the Southwest alternatives independently. So this shows you the incremental increase that would be added to the foundational CIP and then the resulting rate increase for each year for each of those alternatives. And again, you can see off to the right-hand column ultimately what that means, the cumulative increase from both the foundational and then each of, each of the Southeast alternatives. And then this represents the estimated water bill, annual water bill, again, for each alternative, as well as for the combined water and sewer bill. So the top part is the water bill and the second part is the combined bill.
Once, once again, on this slide, we do not have Southeast Number Four because we just, we just received that information. And I do appreciate Wooton for, for turning that around to us quickly because they did. So we're looking at 18.1 million dollars and Ms. Conti has not had a chance to run that through her models, but we did say earlier, and I've heard in this meeting, that it is similar to Swansboro Number One. And so if you will, just take, take a moment to look at this slide, which is Southeast Number One, Southeast Number Two, and Southeast Number Three. And even though it's not identical, what I'd like to do is just, I'll rapidly scroll back to Swansboro and just let you see this same slide for Swansboro again to get some, some measure of what it might be closest to among those numbers that we have prepared. So here you have Southeast Number One, water only 34.96 and fiscal year 26, and then Southeast One, 38.51, then 39.24, and then 39.55. And now, I'm going to blur the screen for you for a second. Okay, and here we are at Swansboro, and you'll see Swansboro Number One was at 37.59. And you'll see the increases for Swansboro Number One. Elaine, anything you'd like to say about, about this one?
No, I think you're exactly right. It is similar to Swansboro Number One.
Okay.
Mr. Hudson, I don't remember what were, was the Marine Corps Base willing to guarantee the rate for some period of time, the treatment cost?
Director Bennett, they don't guarantee the rate for a period of time. It's what the market rate is. And we have seen some minor rate increases. It's $4.14 per thousand gallons right now. Ms. Riggs, do you, do you recall the historic Marine Corps rate increase? Because we've actually been a customer of them for 15 years. I haven't pumped to them that whole time, but go ahead.
Initially, we started out at 375,000 gallons, and then we went to 393, and then we stepped up to 414.
And that's been over a period of?
I can't recall the actual years that changed because I lost that information, but that was at the beginning, the 375, if my memory is right, was maybe for the initial two or three years, and then went to 393, and then it's probably been within the last five years or so, we went to 414.
So they change it annually at the fiscal year, when they make the change, is that?
They actually change it on, on the calendar year. Typically in January, when we send a letter and let them know how much anticipated flow we intend to send for that year, and then they would let us know any increases at that time.
But they have not changed it every calendar year?
No, they have not.
No. Directors, we're here to answer questions. You have four available alternatives in the Southeast area. If you were to choose Alternative Number One, that's a standard construction, move forward with design permitting construction. Number Two, design permitting construction. Number Three is a public-private partnership option. We would move forward with Mr. Doug Carter, Mr. Andrew Carter for a period of negotiation. And then following that negotiation, the private sector would move into some sort of construction on their side. And Number Four, we have an existing intergovernmental service agreement with the base, which base legal has verified, covers an additional connection point. So there's no real negotiation in terms of an intergovernmental service agreement. We have that, that in place. It would be design permitting and construction, and that would be for delivery of wastewater to the connection point with the base. If you chose Alternative Number Four, staff would ask that we come back to the board in September, on September 17th, with additional numbers. Our engineers, we, I talked to them as recently as just before this meeting and confirmed with them at about 5:45 PM tonight that, that, that they would like some additional time to work with the engineers aboard the base. And of course, we do have an initial preliminary response from the base that, that according to our existing flows, no additional upsizing would be needed immediately, but as we move toward that million gallon flow at some point in time in the future, I don't know when that would be, five years, six years, 10 years, 15 years, but some upsizing may be necessary at that point in time, but not initially. So we, we would like to have some more time to come to the board. You have a meeting on September 17th if you choose Number Four, and we would bring some of that additional data back to the board on the 17th. Whatever alternative the board selects, one, two, three, or four, Mr. Chairman, we would ask the board consider a motion to approve a project budget ordinance for the Southeast alternative selected. That would allow us to, it's a financial mechanism, allows us to go ahead and engage some of that engineering and further study that would then lead into design, et cetera, after the board sees this again on, on September 17th. If it's for four, if it's for one or two, we pretty much know what that is and would be moving forward.
I'm going to make a motion to move forward with exploring Option Four with more data at our next regular meeting.
Right. Moved in second to move ahead with Option Four with a project ordinance budget to consider that as an alternative with more information? Is that, is that the gist of the motion?
Yes, sir. Motion to approve Alternative Four to come back to the board on September 17th. And then, and you could include it in the same motion if you desire, but a motion to approve a project budget ordinance for the Southeast Alternative Four.
So moved as read.
You heard the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation to you this evening. We thank the board for your deliberation. For the benefit of the public in the room and also those that might be watching on television, I would like to say, Mr. Chairman, that, that the board has received a technical memoranda that was written from the Wooton Company, a wealth of information, a lot of information prior to this meeting. So this is not, we did not ask the board to consider these items at first sight this evening, and we appreciate the board's due diligence and, and getting back with us on all those questions you've had over the last couple of weeks. We do appreciate your diligence. Thank you, sir.
Any comments from the board? I'm starting with Tom or Tim.
Yeah, sorry.
I call you by your name.
Just a thing, it's a great night, wonderful presentations. I think something important to put out there is, is the continued relationship with Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, is that not only do we have a significant number of military, Marine Corps, Navy families aboard the military installation, but we have a lot of the military families living within Oslo County. And this continues that operation and partnership between the Marine Corps Base and Oslo County. So I think that's significant moving forward is to show in the Secretary of the Navy and Assistant Secretary of the Navy of the Oslo County and its relationship with the military to maintain as we move forward in other endeavors. So, thank you all.
Anybody else?
Thank you guys, all the work that you put into this.
Yes, thank you again, and I just am excited about the opportunity to partner with the Marine Corps Base to save our ratepayers money in the long run. That's, that's the, I think the goal of Onwasa is to provide the service at the best, best rate that we possibly can. And through partnering with the Marine Corps, that gives us a lot of options that we didn't have before. Thank you.
I think Mr. Hudson kind of lightly touched on the fact that the information we got, we got a lot of information before this, and I appreciate that for getting it to us because had we waited and tried to get the information that y'all sent us tonight to try to go over, there's no telling how long we'd been here. But it's, it's, you know, we didn't anticipate five or six years ago that Oslo County, Swansboro, and South, down in Miami, we're going to have the kind of growth we've had. And so this is growing pains that we've experienced. We were lucky not to have to raise rates over a period of time, but with the growth and, and, you know, the age of our plants and everything else, it's, rates are inevitable. But I think this growth shows that Oslo County as a whole is growing and it's good it's, it's happening. And I appreciate all the work everybody done, and I appreciate everybody that's watches on TV and that's always there to watch us. So thanks again for all of y'all's work.
I just want to echo the comments that everybody else has already said. I just greatly appreciate all the work that has gone into the package that was delivered to us in, in giving us enough time to be able to digest it and be able to sit up here and have a chance to ask educated questions of the staff. So thanks so much.
Same thing, echo all the comments. Thank you for everyone for coming, and I agree with everyone. Thank you so much, Mr. Hudson, for sending us tons of information beforehand. It was like, not another email, are we? You know, it's like, oh my goodness, I have to read all this. And it, but it helped. I honestly thought we were going to be here at midnight. I did. So thank you, everyone.
I agree with you. I thought it was going to be a long meeting. In fact, I told Jeff that when I met with him, I says, are you planning to send out for breakfast? And, but I think it's a tribute to the staff and to the consultants and especially our staff that they were able to put together very valuable and comprehensive information to help this board make the kind of decisions that we were elected to provide. And certainly we're not there yet in terms of a final solution on the Southwest. We've made considerable progress in clarifying our objectives and the functional or foundational CIP plan, there being no, oh, Mr. Hudson, any comments?
I'd just like to thank you and the board members for, for looking through everything and for the questions you sent us in advance, gave us a chance to research and get back to you. So thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion second.
Move in second, let's adjourn.